Bob, how are y'all making out with Beverly being retired?
The college workshop of the Arundel Planning Board to order. It is 7:01 PM on the 5th of March. No, I passed all the papers down. That's the only one that came back.
I didn't. Oh, much like for...
Where's the rest of it?
I don't know.
That's what I just asked.
I split it down.
This is, this is the drilling thing.
Oh, wait a minute. I know where it is.
Sorry about that.
Susan kept it. Okay, we only have one thing on the agenda tonight. And that, you have all of that. It is the item from Mitchell Associates. They want to make a change to the Townhouse Corner District. And I had asked them to put together what they would like to have. And they gave us back that section with Townhouse Corner District. And the only addition that they have is the yellow highlight on the first page. That is from Bob McFadden. He's given us the maps that show the affected areas.
I was gonna say, I feel like I saw that heading over there.
I'll open it to Bob and he can tell us all about the fun time he has putting this together.
Well, my office manager had a hand in it, okay. Basically, the last couple times we've been in here, the whole emphasis on this is to be able to create a greater density, to do more affordable workforce housing venues. And proposal is, you know, where public water does serve part of Townhouse. And I think I've explained before, the Water District is open to extending it further up Lock Haven. However, that obviously is not going to be on their nickel, but will be willing to contribute if people are looking for the bringing water service in aspiration. And as we know, sewer isn't out there, but you know, the subsurface waste disposal technology that's out there. They've gone through the grain tall. Four units in the back have their own system. And the grain tall building itself had an upgraded system done so we could actually handle up to 13 potential residential units based on the size of that particular system that's in the ground up there. So, the 8,000 square feet works well within what our client is considering doing. He's not looking at 13 new units in that building. Since that's the capacity of the system, that's why we brought that to the attention. He's looking at potentially doing one, two bedroom type units. We could add 13 in there based on the square footage of the site and on the capacity of the septic system, but that's not his intent. When we look at this perspective, it's his lot, but looking at what seems to make sense in the Townhouse Square. And based on the number of lots, the total acreage out there, it just seemed that number worked really well in terms of arriving and the density. Again, the density is explained all the way along. It's all got to be predicated on, you know, what subsurface waste capacity is on the various lots that are developed. That's another one of your mitigating, you know, controlling factors in terms of how you get your density. But this seems to be a reasonable number to work with. It will allow you to be able to get some needed rental workforce type housing. That's the basis of what the request was. We reduced that from 20,000 to the 8,000. We did pick the, because there was no category for minimum net lot area for multi-family unit under the all uses without public water sewer. We put that as 20,000 square feet. That was a number that Ted and I had discussed before we finalized this. So, that's where 20,000 came from, under the particular category.
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah. One thought was for that board for 55 and older. I forgot how I threw that out at the time. Is there any difference in square footage? I mean, and...
Minimum lot size requirements? I really did not look at the address to be 55 and older.
I was, I was just, I had thought of that a long way in the light. And, and actually, how many units are you thinking of? I know maximum is 13, but what is the realistic?
I think that is, I gotta go back to my notes. I just think I remember just noticing. He was looking at total of eight or nine in the right call.
You don't know the square footage of that building by any chance? Just like the exterior of the mansion.
Yeah. I may have it on the board. I can't remember. Yeah, I don't have the square footage on that. I'd say it's probably an excess of 6,000 square feet, just looking at the scale of the footprint. I have my scale in here. I'll try and do a little more accurate.
So, Bob, while you're looking through your paperwork, have you had any further feedback from the community about making this change? Or is it unbelievable?
I have sent out the second, second set of notifications, all property owners in the district. Oh.
Property owners in the district, right?
No, but I have opened two.
Have you? Where are they?
Uh, not here. I can't tell you. Uh, one said, "No problem." The other said, "Don't like it." So, both went. Didn't go into any details, but I haven't been meeting yet.
Total square footage around 5,800 square feet. Total, two floors.
Two floors, okay. I was, I was just curious because the building footprint can't be more than 5,000. And I don't know what the dimension, I couldn't measure dimensions with a graph. I wouldn't get it right.
Yeah, that's less.
Okay. I do have a question about the height of the building. Because the maximum height is 35 feet, so that's got to be getting pretty close.
I don't know what the height is, but it's a grandchild of its building, so.
Okay.
So, your height would be on so many buildings, like if Brad, if he has no intentions of touching the exterior.
I think it was probably 35 before I would have ever changed that.
And in terms of height, whether or not that makes sense to look at it as things move on in terms of the type of development down in there, or whether or not that turns out to be a benefit for you. It just felt as though the 35-foot height range right now seems to work very well. Ted and I did have a discussion about this way back looking at initially starting this in terms of how it met. You know, the ability in terms of height of the building, being able to get the units in based on your 5,000 square actual building footprint. But without going into some architectural details to determine what that actually means. The time to really get it started around architecture in the future, so that's our statement.
One other. You have minimum lot size, the very first line in the ground. 20,000 square feet net density with public water. In the ordinance, without public water, it's one acre. And this appears to have been changed to 20,000.
A typo or? Yeah, it's a typo.
Okay.
And in regards to the net development density or net residential density, Bob, there is. Because underneath that says ADD, but underneath it says net residential density. Right under that, Zab, which already talks about that multi-family residential density shall meet the net residential density requirement in subdivision.
Right.
So, so.
I didn't delay the language. I think you just want to go to the next page.
Right.
Insatiation.
Okay, good. Just, I want to make that clear that you know that.
Yeah.
So, I think that's just a typo.
Yeah, the thing was, I gave Redline's back, and I'm just managing. She was typing all this up on the floor, and she saw a change of 20,000 square feet for the minimum for the multi-family. I thought it was changing local locations.
I have a couple of questions. John Fitzpatrick is not locked into doing affordable housing with this project. So, if he decides he wants to change course and do more luxury housing to accommodate, you know, residences that like to use Kenny Bonport, Arundel, that particular very key area as a landing pad for summer, fall activities?
All my discussions were him, and he's looking to doing more for a rental size unit. And based on the square footage of the building and how many units he can actually get in there, they're not really compatible to make luxury type units. He could do larger ones. It would be basically, he's looking at 20,000 square feet than what he were for a multi-family.
So, the second half of my question is, as affordable housing, will you be looking or will he be looking to the town of Arundel for any kind of subsidy support or anything else?
I've been going through this in a couple of locations where you start talking about four. Four housing used to be all subsidized housing, then affordable housing, and then workforce housing. And the workforce housing is really geared towards, now it becomes a percentage of median income.
Was it 80%?
Yeah, I think it's 80% of median income. So, it's really looking at people that are employees in the commercial areas within, well, the Arundel, Kenny Bonport, Kenny Bon. People that, well, people that work in the community, but can't afford to live in the communities. Basically, that's what he's commiring towards. The back building, which used to be the old dome at Hurry. He has four units out there. I believe they're all single women. Three of them have kids. And anytime one of those goes, his home runs off the line.
Oh, for somebody to take it out.
Exactly.
So, can these be lived work spaces as well, or do you want it, I mean, is there?
That was never anything he was looking at. It was really more for, you know, to find a way to provide more affordable rental units.
Right.
I mean, he's not looking at any sort of subsidies in the town or the state or the federal government. He's really trying to put something in a market that falls in line with what he has in the four units out there.
Well, he can get it from the state or from the federal government, or whatever. Disappointing, he's not looking to the town of Arundel for tax breaks and things like that.
He'll do a lot of work for it. That's the housing. That's a challenge.
Got a question? If I can, a question?
Yes, yeah.
In that particular area, I know we're speaking of the property. But does, or will there be a need for like three-phase power for your introductions, any of that other stuff? I mean, I don't know if it's actually in the, or how far up the area it comes to be there. Or I know we have the law, quote unquote, but I mean, if there's.
So, the type of, the type of building, the single phase, he's fine with that?
You know, just throwing that out as a thought, a question to me.
Mechanical equipment for that will require. And then if anybody else is holding a building out there that they wanted to put an elevator in, you can get elevator lifts that actually will operate off a single phase.
Yeah, with four phases, not being on all that and stuff.
But there's no need as far as he's, his use for three phases.
Yeah.
He given the residential development, like unless you're looking at a real tall building that you're getting like bigger elevator demand and your mechanical equipment has to work wrong, then you would probably need to look at three phases.
There is an elevator in there, is it there?
Good question. Been in there enough times.
I don't know.
I've been in there when it's been the bike, for the bike jobs.
I remember way back when, there was talk of it. And I don't know if it ever proceeded. It was out towards the back where the kiln was and everything else at one time or another.
I think that was related to the fact, knowing that when it was approved for 21 incubated units, they were going to meet ADA requirements. They had to have an elevator. I think that's what they were talking about when they never executed that.
I, I'm just inquiring.
I wasn't here at that time, but that's what.
That's your own mind working.
So, you know, Bob and Ted, do you guys know in that district, what the, is there any undeveloped parcels?
There's underdeveloped parcels.
Yeah.
But not many. And remember, this is a small block district.
Right.
First one that pops up, there's one next door, and that's the art stu-, the art, basically an art studio next door. They have a back lot that they could use. They could extend, well, no, they could receive water there. Then there's a next larger one, parcel close to the existing water line. It's probably forefathers, but they still have to extend the water line to get there. Because it doesn't go to forefathers, which is lot 39.
Yeah.
That's got about, it's got, it's got almost, yeah, it's got, it's got large wet. It's got, let's say it's got about three acres. So, and then everything else is relatively small.
Well, in terms of where the water, is there just four lots?
There's just three.
Yeah, there's just three lots that have, on the Arundel Road that actually have water going to it.
And then striking this is, the next, might have some viability, striking this is 245.
Does Wigs have it?
Yeah.
Are all Wigs?
Yeah.
Have water?
Yep. Yeah, the line runs just past the store and that comes to an end.
So, what are they, are they lots noted as 21, 2019, and 17?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. It's really the quarter along Arundel Road. When the planning board did this, the intent was to see if we could get some sewer expansion or more water, basically water expansion so that we could get some higher quality density or some intensity in the district.
There is a sheet in there with the Water District.
Have you heard or anybody get any thoughts or feedback from Kennamal Port, which is across the street? Where the water is into there? Any thoughts, ideas, or anything else?
I have not heard back from them. I have called. I should probably call. I haven't heard from anybody. Five acres here, four acres here. Theoretically possible. There's, there's not a lot of places that they're going to have. This has got some sewer.
Yeah.
So, if you do the net residential.
Well, you've got that little screen cover. It's just going to hit back there.
I always thought that was River Road still there, turning, now they call it an Arundel Road down near the Grange?
Yeah, River Road actually goes on the golf course. Yeah, it splits off.
And so, does that road follow, or does it stop right there around Middlebrook?
No, you, you go down and make the turn, and then you come back to River Road on the other side. You can take Arundel Road all the way down, and then you can make a left onto River Road, which will bring you back up around the back course.
You're making a turn.
Straight back there.
Yeah, if you go straight down River Road, when you cross the brook where the golf course was.
Yeah.
It's off, River Road goes off to the right.
It goes along the golf course, back out to, what is it?
Lock Haven.
Lock Haven Road.
There it is.
Yeah, called Arundel, I guess, from that point. Back out to Lock Haven in that direction.
The aerial detachment that's in that kind of, that is, or something like that. Looking for the Water District.
Yeah, it's a race.
So, here's the brook. I think River Road comes down like this. And right about here, you got the brook and the golf course.
Yeah, that's where the dam.
Right.
Okay.
River continues this way.
There's a river.
I always, I always thought it was.
I never differentiate.
I've gone down that road for the last 40 plus years. Okay? Can I live on River Road?
What's the question, gentlemen? Are we good with adding this in?
What do you mean, are we good with adding this?
Well, we're being asked to add this modification into the zoning ordinance so that we can then take it to Town Meeting. This is the change that they're asking us to put in. I don't have a problem making that change. It's up to the rest of you, though. How do you feel about it?
Do, I didn't bring my ordinance. Do any other zones have consideration for an increased density with water or sewer?
If, if they were to ask, yes. Though, right now, nobody else has asked about it. But there are, I think.
What do you mean, nobody has asked about?
Well, the only, the only reason this is here is because Bob Tammons said, "We'd like to do this project." If he hadn't asked us, we wouldn't be looking at it.
Right. My question is, currently in the ordinance, like say in the VIH District.
Okay.
Or what we call the DV1. Is there a provision for increased density because water runs right along through there?
I don't think so.
Okay, so this would be unique to the Townhouse Corner District?
To the Townhouse Corner.
So, I have a question to you and the rest of the board members. Is this the direction that we want to go in? And do we think by making this change, it's going to put us on the path for development that we want to take? Or is it still kind of nebulous? We really don't know what this change is going to do?
This, this particular change in Townhouse Corner may not do much of anything because there's only two lots in the entire district that could, that would be impacted one way or the other.
Well, just by virtue of the fact that you're making the change, opens the door to further change too.
No more than if somebody else had come to us. We've had other people come and say, "Can I have, can I get a zoning change to a different zone?" Or "Can I do something different?" And they've come and asked. There's no guarantee that we'll do this. I, I'm saying, I don't have a problem if we do it. I don't have a problem if we don't. This is, this is a decision that will get made for us. It will get made at this level. Should, should Bob decide that, if we say no and he doesn't like it, he can always get signatures and go to the Town Meeting and say, "I want to do this."
My question is, how would it affect school? Tax watch?
I, I don't know. That depends, a lot of that's going to depend on who rent, who goes into these units.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering how many bedrooms or everything else along that way. That's why at one time or another, if it was 55, you wouldn't have any along the way for possible school. But then also too, at the same time, your workforce also needs affordability too. I mean, so, I mean, it's a double-edged sword here. I mean.
But he doesn't have to do affordable housing, so we're not guaranteed that you're going to get it. I mean, he's, I think, I think Bob is saying that that's his intention right now. But that could change. It's not written in stone, so.
Well, and I think, I mean, and that's part of why I asked, my question is, I mean, it sounds like Bob's client's intentions are very honorable. But we don't know what that would open up to the neighbor, you know, with an undeveloped parcel. That being said, I mean, I, from, my understanding of a lot of these provisions is that it would, a lot of ordinances would allow for a doubling of, of the density. Bob, what would that do to your, your client's interest in particular if the 8,000 was, was say 10,000?
Look at those numbers.
I mean, it didn't, it sounded like from what you were proposing, that you had, what it almost sounded like was an excess of density on your parcel if they just developed the existing building.
Because I mean, right now, part of this density already is the four units in the back.
Yep.
So, it's just the additional units that he could do in the Grange. So, what we looked at is what seemed to be equitable to make sense to go forward with doing something. And at the same time, making a zone change that would make sense. I started looking at other communities zoning in terms of lot size and things like that. Maybe 8,000 came, I mean, there were some down around 6,000 square feet. We just thought that was excessive.
They also have sewer.
Oh, yeah, exactly. But I mean, in terms of the technology, you may be able to, the septic system and engineered system, they could accommodate that. But we just thought that was way too far going over, so. Let's just try to do a quick, uh, relationship.
I mean, I don't know how this ultimately plays in with any language within the comprehensive plan. In my sense of things, I mean, that part of town is getting into, you know, if, if there is a more urban part of town, it's getting down that way as you're getting closer towards Kenny Bonport. And the town down that, you know, down there. But, you know, so if we were to do that, I think this or the DV1 would be the viable spots. But, you know, that's me.
Well, the DV, just to answer your question before, DV1 does not have, there is no residential on DV1 except on second floor.
Well, that's right.
Third, fourth, remember that?
Yep, yep.
And then there's a density bonus for mixed-use projects in the DV2 where you can have density, where you can have residential. But the more business you have, the closer you get to 50/50, the less density, the higher the density for residential.
Yep, yep, I remember that.
That was, that was supposed to incentivize at least getting business in there and stopping the bleeding of a lot of that land during residential.
Right.
The only thing that we would have to do if you were to proceed with this, you would have to exempt, put a provision in the provision for 55 and older, restricted housing, that that would not be eligible in this area by that density. Because age restricted housing on this would be like 10,000 square foot. So, this is actually a better deal than age restricted housing, double density. In other words, we want to make sure that we didn't get double density for 4,000 square feet for this reason. So, we have to put an exemption that this does not apply to the density of the 55 and older housing. 4,000, now we're to no problems because that source can take it then.
If you were to take a look at a two-acre lot, which some of these lots are two acres. Say, if you were to use your standard of taking 15% out to a calculation, that density, not including any, you know, wet ones. You could probably, at best, yes, you could achieve eight units. But you probably could not achieve eight units with a 35-foot height in a building footprint trying to accommodate those. So, the likelihood is, you might see on a two-acre lot, someone might be able to considerably look at six units. But again, the size of the septic system and the capacity of the land to carry that, that's, that's part of your controlling factor as well in terms of your overall density.
So, if by some strange spur of luck, the, you get sewer as well as water there, then you wouldn't be restricted by just developing the buildings as they exist. Although there's not that much space left. the buildings as they exist, although there's not that much space left for you to do much of anything else.
Right.
So, but is that a, something, you know, we want to consider?
Yeah, I don't see any setup for sewer in that area unless the soils are so bad that water doesn't make it work. The controlling factor here is sewer and water on the site. In this case, you're taking one of those factors out, which is water. Because your setback requirements in the state of Maine are, you have to have unrefined setback to your sewer and your well. In some of these lots, you're not going to be able to do that.
Right, I know we can't do it now, but.
But the soils are the limiting factor.
I guess in terms of sewer expansion, I'm not sure unless you build your own sewer plant. It's going to happen because I know Kenny Bunkport has a maximum capacity of six hundred units. They could accommodate in their system right now. And Kenny Bunkport's six hundred, something like that as well.
So Bob, if he wanted to tear down these buildings and do a different configuration, he could do that too. Is that right, once we make the change to the townhouse?
Yeah, but the density still is going to be probably about a total of thirteen units between the four, the four that he has in the back.
Right, but he wouldn't be restricted to the.
Well, I mean, he still couldn't do any more than thirteen.
Right, right. But he could create something completely different if he wanted to.
Well, he could tear everything down and build one building.
Right.
But that being said, the density isn't going to change on that lot from what it'd be allowed now. He's just not going to go to the maximum total of thirteen units. This eight thousand square foot change will allow it.
I'm just trying to think of what else can happen to that lot. And, you know, he's going to develop the buildings that are there, which is a good thing, I think.
Like Jingle Vert. Jingle Vert, when you factor in the setbacks from lot lines and the parking that he's going to have, he's not going to be able to go very far horizontally either.
And the thing is, what's controlling this as well is the fact, the maximum number of dinners that he can have based on existing.
Existing septic system.
Is a total of thirteen for the Grange, but he has no intention of trying to get thirteen in that building. This density change would give him thirteen in that building.
Right.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
I'm sorry, I was late. I didn't hear your introduction and your comments. The meeting was posted through the library, so I started to go home. And then I saw your cars here, and I think there were others who might have been attending too, but had to turn around because there's little note to say that you missed your Spanish room. So, my question is, and I am Milton Kastner, because I live close to this particular area. I understand that the Grange Hall is a unique building and it may require some even compensation for its uniqueness. But I'm not sure why we are opening this to the entire townhouse corners area. Why isn't this just like a contract zone for this particular unique building? My concern is that we are going to, there are a number of lots for sale. Like there are Winx. Remember when we went through the whole reselling here and Winx was the pivot or piece of property because we wanted to allow Winx to expand. Now, Winx has been vacant for years and that never came to be. So this whole experience was really something that didn't pan out. So my question is, why would you open this entire district, townhouse corners district, up to this reduced density when it's really just one building that is the center of all this?
I think it's a good question.
Yes, it's mainly because we do not have contract zoning. The concept of contract zoning has been rejected several times by citizens. So we cannot do contract zoning.
Which we could, that's changed.
I'm sick of getting me off.
I'm not getting you off, I'm just asking. I mean, other towns do contract zoning all the time. Bob, you've probably been very involved in that, I know.
And that's because Kenny Bunk has its provisions to allow it.
But that's not something that's off the table, I don't.
No, but that is something that right now we don't have. We've run into a big wall of contract zoning in the past.
Maybe this is a unique opportunity to allow that kind of thing for this unique property.
That's an alternative to doing the whole district. One of the things about the whole district is that there's really, if we look at the logistics, very honestly, in a way, this is sort of backdoor contract zoning. Because there are very few, there's a very limited number of properties that are currently on that can have access to KKW water system. Most of the district that isn't, is not within range of the KKW water district law. And therefore, it's really the normal road properties that are doing it. If you look at some of those properties, only one of the property really has any potential to develop for multi-family. And otherwise, what one would have to do is extend the KKW water line all the way up, well, up Lock Haven Road. And it's pretty pricey to extend water line. You've got to have, you know, Bob, I don't know, I could check this, but I know it's fifty bucks. Last time I checked, it was fifty bucks a linear foot for the water. It's probably more, I should have asked Jamie Rives in the front office last week, but.
Water district, you give me some numbers, I'm not sure I have them in this file. It would have to be an eight inch line minimum, but they would want it to be as long, because they would pay the difference.
I think to your point, I think the answer is that, one, we don't have contract zoning. Two, if we go through the process and it gets shot down, that simply delays this project. And in all reality, this is not a contract zone, but it might as well because there's only five properties in the entire district that you would be, because you have to have water or sewer and you have to have enough of a sewer system. The reason that the Grange works is because it had a daycare in it with a very large sewer system in it. So the owner is not going to have to put in an expensive sewer system to meet the criteria. Anybody else would have a big problem getting the sewers system in there.
Yeah, but probably has to be involved in the treatment, which is expensive.
So why not just say it applies to this particular smaller area rather than the block that we will never, will never be able to.
Because we don't have contract zoning. And the applicant wants to get started on this, and this is the quickest and fastest way to do it.
So the question is, do we want to allow this and make the change?
Correct.
Which affects the entire district?
Yep.
Or do we, are we not sure of the path we would like this area to take and maybe not give it a designation?
Yeah, that's a good way to describe it.
Also, one other quick question, Bob. How far are you from the fire hydrant, the Grange?
I think we talked about this. Isn't that in the church? Right across or right on the church or.
Church.
It turns in the corner.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was thinking, but I didn't think the fire hydrant was at the church. I was thinking it was all the way down still. Around the bend.
I just wondered, oh, sorry, excuse me, I'm talking to the main show.
It's probably equidistant in either direction, either over to the church or down to the party rates closer to the church.
The church is closer.
But you have to cross Lock Haven Road a little bit, and that's.
That's.
Actually, it looks like, with this intersection you see, if you look at the water dissection. You've got a red cross in there, you believe that, the hydrant. So you've got this, I'm not sure what the business is here in the corner, a garage, a truck or anything on, by the aisle. It looks like that's for the hydrant.
That would definitely be the closest, yeah.
There is a red mark. Looks like up over by the church, but I'm not 100% sure. It's not as bold as this.
You're still crossing.
No. Because where that hydrant would be almost frustrating with an historic siding. Because that was McCain's garage. At the corner there, which is almost running, and that road runs parallel right into Winx. So it wouldn't be crossing Lock Haven or Main Street, whatever. North Street.
Yeah, that's, yeah. And that's the sixteen inch line of this house.
Can you just also mention about the height restriction? I'm sorry about that.
We did discuss it. This building is probably right at the current restriction, but, and that restriction has probably been around as long as the land ordinance has, thirty-five feet.
So that's not being proposed to change.
Five thousand square feet is not very big.
So someone theoretically could come in by Winx and put in a number of apartment buildings that go up if there's like.
Theoretically. And if they were able to put in a septic system that would handle it, they would be allowed to do so.
Can I ask you a question? Do you tie them on?
Oh, yeah.
Are the design standards in the townhouse square, the architecture has to be similar?
Yep.
To a thirty-five foot building, I'm only going to get two and a half to ask the stores. Thirty-five foot building. The only way to get cheap people is to make that flower.
Not very practical, I think.
A lot of people do it.
It's cheap, but it's not practical.
Winx is a half an acre in here. Twenty thousand square. Unless, did you hear?
So you probably never even get a septic system on the side.
It's right.
Except if it is online that would accommodate.
Any other questions for the applicant?
What's your opinion? Any comments from the complaint committee as a representative?
I'd like to respond to what Jamie asked before.
Okay.
And then, unless I'm missing something, I don't see anything in the count plan that would prevent this from happening. Because the count plan has, it's a short thing anyway, but I won't even read all of it. The district has historically been a mixed use district and an important institutional and commercial crossroads. Will permit small scale retail, office service and community uses as well as single and multi-family dwellings. Mixed use projects will also be permitted. And then new construction shall be designed to reflect the characters surrounding residential neighborhoods. So, you know, nothing in here that says you couldn't do this, that I can see.
Three, yeah.
So when you were taking the temperature of your neighbors when they were expressing their opinions, were they strident in expressing them? Or could you get a feel for?
Very brief, because we were busy feeding the entire town to this booking. Not an opportunity for a lot of in-depth discussion.
And do you have an opinion about what we should do with this?
I could argue you decided this quite nicely. So I'm listening to you. You're kind of in the same place I think I am. You know, I worry about precedent with these things. This seems fairly innocuous because of the limitations of the district. But a lot of what you said before in terms of, you know, if we do this here, what is it open up for someplace else? You know, those things always worry me.
Yeah, you just don't know if you're opening a Pandora's box.
Exactly.
Or if we're ushering in a boom to development in that area that's going to benefit Kenny Bunkport and around them. I don't know the answer to that question, is why I'm hesitant.
And I mean, I also have, as you know, I always do, concerns for the people who live there. Now, you know, again, you have asked, you're not getting a lot of feedback, but that doesn't necessarily.
Did you say that we're not getting a lot of feedback?
As it rose over.
We didn't get any feedback.
Well, here I am, I'm giving you feedback and I live here.
We had a public hearing and nobody showed up at the public.
Was it the library? It was.
But, you know, again, I have concerns for the people who live there and how this will be received. You know, you're not finding out beforehand from a lot of people, but you might find out at town meeting.
And we might, and if we do, that's fine. If that's one of the risks. Because we're going to have to have, if we go forward, we're going to have to have another public hearing on the ordinance change itself. And then we'll go to town meeting and see what happens.
Or you're going to have that next public hearing, that's when we'll flip the flag of nobody knew, no, I don't like it, or whatever else I know.
Yep.
Which is typical.
At this point, we just need a motion one way or the other, or we can just let it die a slow and painful death.
My, still, my one thing is, the ten thousand, minimum eight to ten, what would that make the difference?
I'd have to run back and run through my calculations on that. I can't give you an answer right now.
Because split it in half from twenty to ten, but I don't think that would make, but that's why I was trying to ask about the senior citizen thing. I mean, uh.
I mean, there's nothing that precludes him from renting to someone that's a senior that wants to downsize and have just a rental. You know, the same thing, I mean, the units are not going to be that large, so there's not going to be a case where you're looking at having large families as far as rental, as far as what he's looking at. In terms of the number of units in which you can get in on some of these lots, like I said, you take a look at a lot of the two acre lots, it'd be hard pressed to get a building that's going to accommodate six, more than six units on a two acre parcel. Because you're going to be restricted in terms of land area you need, not only for the building, but for your septic system and your parking and everything else that goes with it. And then having to read all your required zoning setbacks. I mean, you put that in, you have a two acre parcel, it sounds like a lot of land as opposed to.
I think Marty's also thinking about schools and, you know, adding to the.
Hi, hi, here.
People who don't pay taxes, although John Fitzpatrick is going to pay taxes, so.
I think he already does.
Absorb some of that, sure.
Well, pay taxes in the rental structure because the landlord pays taxes. It's not going to absorb that. So assesses that, it's part of the rental structure.
So I hope we take a vote?
I don't know. We're going to take a vote. That was really good.
I think we could discuss that motion for a while.
Talking about splitting the baby.
Somebody make a motion.
Make a motion, somebody.
So, I will throw out, and Bob, I am more in favor of doing this at, say, ten thousand, just a true doubling of the density than going any more than that at this point. I mean, so I will make a motion, we, I guess, Ted, are we going to draft this and put it forth to a public hearing?
Yep.
Yep, so that we draft a proposed ordinance that allows for ten thousand square feet, minimum net lot area per multi-family unit.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion is being made and seconded to draft an ordinance to allow for ten thousand square feet. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Here.
It is three to one. And we will send it, we will draft this ordinance and we will send it to town meeting.
Three to one?
Three to one.
That's to be four.
No, we have to have four people at the meeting.
So we're talking ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
Question, I recommend that the exemption that does not apply to fifty-five and older double density permissions because then we're talking about five thousand.
because then we're talking about five thousand square feet.
I can't hear you down here.
Fifty-five and old, because the, the, right now, because we haven't worked on it yet, we have a standing provision that if you do a fit, an age-restricted community, you get to double the density, assuming that you can actually handle it on the site. But that would result in a five thousand, um, density of one unit per five thousand. And I think that getting into a range there that's not sustainable.
Ted is, Ted is suggesting that on this multifamily density, age-restricted does not apply. So you're not gonna be doubling.
Can we add a footnote?
Yes.
To the table that just simulates that?
I would do it.
Second motion.
Yeah. Yeah, we can add it as a footnote, but we need to make it a motion.
I move we add a footnote to the table that does not allow for the age bonus to be taken on townhouse corner lots with water or sewer.
With, no, with multifamily.
Yeah, multifamily, yeah.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion has been made and seconded to put a footnote in the table indicating that age-restricted developments do not apply to the multifamily unit, so that it will be ten thousand square feet. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And an abstention?
One abstention.
We have four to nothing and with one abstention.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does this have to go through, uh, legal review? Question?
Me too.
I'm just asking a question.
Guess it should.
Okay, good. Then, we, we will take the selectmen's approach and we will send it up for legal review. And then, when we get that back, we'll schedule the public hearing.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, only on one question.
Yeah, Marty.
That we have it back in time, so we're not paying last minute Charlie on a public hearing before...
Okay. If we didn't send it out for review, we'd have the public hearing.
Well, I'm just going at what we requested by the selectman last night.
If it, if it goes out tomorrow, can we request they send it back by the end of the month? What are our chances?
Actually, I asked about this, this, uh, water thing. This, this never will end.
As soon as they get it back, we'll schedule a public hearing. Is there anything else we have to do over?
Um, I, I was gonna talk about a number of other things we're still talking about. But we did get, the folks asked me to contact...
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Folks asked me to contact, uh, legal about, uh, medical marijuana, since we have, uh, we have a number of inquiries on which folks want to do. Essentially warehouse, medical marijuana, especially one of the bulk warehouses and putting multiple marijuana caregivers, which was contrary to our current ordinance, which is based on, um, essentially a statute which has been replaced by, by the new statutes that were passed back in nineteen, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand thirteen. And we challenged on that, we stood firm and said, no, that was the intent of the ordinance. And we just said, yep, we agreed, that's the intent, but if it's a, it goes, you're not gonna be able to keep that one. So we've got a memo in the back on what, how we should change the language from medical marijuana, so it is not industrial, but remains the kind of industry that was intended for. For those of you who are reading it right now, they have medical marijuana as the first word. It's now been changed dramatically. What's, the important highlights of it are that, number one, that now medical marijuana also includes, um, retail stores, registered dispensaries, testing facilities, and manufacturing facilities for medical marijuana, not for retail, recreational marijuana. So that's another whole new line of uses. Again, that's an opt-in situation, uh, that you can opt into doing any of those facilities if the town wants to. The real change in medical marijuana caregiver policy is essentially that medical marijuana caregivers, we were restricting how many we could have by distances between, you know, a property. The idea was, originally was we were gonna have one per property or one per facility, um, so they would not, would not get these warehouse concepts of these huge facilities. Um, and that was working fine, but because, and that was actually a way of regulating this number. There were a lot in the DB two district where they're away from the front of the building because they are production facilities. And it was a good place to put them in the DB two district. And, um, what has happened, however, is that the state has instituted new policy which has eliminated the restriction of the number of patients that are supplied by one medical marijuana caregiver. They can have an unlimited number of patients. What they're limited to is the number of plants each one can do. Um, and that is basically thirty plants, thirty mature plants, um, and, or five hundred square feet of basel area and unlimited number of seconds and unlimited number of patients. The other aspect in here that's changed is they're saying that the municipality does have a right to regulate, their home rule, regulate dispensaries and all of the other facilities that are so now associated with medical marijuana, that it does not have a right to preclude, prohibit medical marijuana caregivers from operating in our town. Or necessarily limiting the number of them that can operate in the town. And that is where we're gonna have to come up with a different strategy. Now, the attorney from, from Woodson, which is Alina Dumas, we had to kick it over her because she's the expert over there on this. She basically said that, um, she's given us language to, to fix what we had in the ordinance about permitted uses in marijuana, basically retail marijuana. But she, she did not address the issue of, of how to fix the, um, really, our limitations on medical marijuana. And she basically said we can't limit the number. Where they go, we can, or we can't have a ceiling number. It doesn't appear like they're... The main question I asked is how do we deal with this warehouse issue of having forty different caregivers in one facility? So, um, I just sent them off the lead tonight because I got this this evening.
If I'm just a little restricted then, oh.
Well, that's...
I was in somebody's house the other day and it reeked, and they don't smoke inside. But they, they go smoke outside and they brought it back in with them and their entire house smelled. Pop factory.
Well, that might be, but it's whether or not it's a nuisance.
It's a nuisance.
Judge O'Neil has reinforced the nuisance concept. He really did, I was really surprised by that. But he really reinforced nuisance as a viable reason for the municipality to deny and have, uh, you propose the use. Even though it's a conditional, uh, permitted use in that district, if it generates a nuisance that is nice to, that is a nuisance and a bona fide nuisance to the neighbors, then that would be one thing that would be involved, that would be control. You would have to come up with some sort of road control in that situation if you do have a warehouse.
You know, but it's, the thing is, is it's coming. A tsunami is coming. And it's interesting, I don't know if you follow Jim Gudbaut on Facebook at all?
No, I know.
But he just did a, I think it was a twenty thousand square foot state-of-the-art grow house in Bitterfield. I don't know how many millions of dollars these guys put into this facility. And the federal government, in the short term, is probably going to come to grips with drugs and their, you know, being portable from one state to the other, which is going to, you know, change things dramatically too. But I think we need to put our own imprimatur on what we're gonna have the town do. But I think the idea of trying to stop it from coming is, uh, really a fool's errand. Because you're not gonna stop it, it's gonna, the state is already throwing roadblocks in Rundle's way so that they can't really lock it out.
But that's only for medical marijuana, that's not for retail marijuana.
Right, so I think we should come up with a plan that allows us to open the door if it, it benefits us.
We already have the door open, we already allow medical marijuana.
Right.
The problem right now...
But recreational use.
No, that citizens absolutely said they don't want recreational use in this town. Two-thirds of them voted in a poll and said they don't want it.
What are the tax implications, Ted, if some of these, um, retail outlets and grow houses and things like that come to Rundle? Does it benefit us, tax-wise?
In what way, income? No, the product, we don't tax product, we have, get none of the revenue from the state tax on it. Because we have local option tax. Because the state's steadfast that refuses us, especially as a coastal community that invites seasonal people. We still refuse to have, um, local option sales taxing, which would benefit us. There, the only thing that we're gonna tax, get taxation on would be on the facility. And these facilities, you might get on the grow lights, you might get on some of the plumbing, but really you don't. You can get fixtures like you get fixtures, uh, from a retail store. Walmart, the value of a retail store at Walmart, the building's just a shell. The treatment is nothing, what you're getting is maybe the hardware in the auto shop, you know, because there's so much expensive stuff in there, and the rest of fixtures in there.
Yeah, you know, what about all your grow lights and everything else?
Grow lights, yeah, but there is no right now, you know, this is a problem we're writing to, writing to assault. There is no really good, um, assessment method for assessing this stuff yet.
For the town.
For the town, that, our only, our only way of doing this is personal property tax. It's the only way we're really gonna do it, because this is portable stuff. So it's personal property tax that, that, that we have, and personal property tax is, is a tough thing to nail down.
Now, what about the special soils they have to grow in? I mean, uh, uh, because there are places, and I don't mean...
You don't tax the soil.
For, for, uh, I, you have to, there, there has to be a certain content to grow the, the basis of nutrient and everything else to grow all this stuff.
Um, to answer that, Marty, I mean, I, I've talked to Beth about this. She's horrified by it, uh, because she doesn't have any clue in how to do this. She'd been talking to other assessors, she'd been to, uh, assessing conferences and, and, uh, recently. Nobody's, they're not really attacking this yet, they don't really know how to do it. Because the state actually hasn't provided any help on that. And in fact, this is almost being superseded by the question of solar. Can we in fact tax solar panels? What's the, what's the, and, and how do we deal with, the state hasn't even finished ruling whether or not it's a sort of hills or something that may be reimbursed, you know, whether they're even taxable as property unless they're fixed, um, on the ground. What's the depreciation rate, you know? This is a pretty new world when it comes to taxation, so I really can't give you an answer right now. Maybe when Beth starts, if Beth is asked, and where we start doing investigations with those with a lot more experience, like Benford, and I think Saco's got a facility, Portland has retail facilities right now, but they don't tax those retail facilities. And usually it exists in structures that don't need to be... What we had, what was proposed to us was basically a shell metal building with partitions in between for growing. Originally, so they were put in, this by a different, different person, they were looking at buying shipping containers and putting them on the wall and the floor, and that was your, that was your, that was your workspace. I think there were the temperature control issues with shipping containers. But maybe that was beneficial because shipping containers are wonderful objects for heat. Do require a sort of, uh, uh, heat to be maintained, so I mean, it's an excellent way of doing it, I don't know. But that's what I would have shipping containers in a metal building. How Beth deals with that, assessing standards, she...
We need an artful tax attorney that deals with land use and that's, so we can bring a revenue stream up to the town of Rundum and offsets in the bar, you know.
Are you sure that it's not a tick district?
Use, use the IRS's depreciation calculator on all of the buildings. You, you tax it at fair market value and then every year you weigh it off about twenty percent of the cost until it's down to nothing.
Unfortunately, assessing in the state of Maine is not done the way that you appreciate resources in the national level. There are rules that...
Nobody depreciates.
Basically.
We, we say we...
We see a PG.
Well, it'd be really interesting to see what other towns are doing, because I'm sure they're trying to figure out ways that they can direct some of that revenue stream down to the very local level. It would certainly be beneficial to that. I don't know if assessors' meetings, meetings are necessarily gonna generate the solutions that we're hoping everybody's gonna be able to find.
Well, the assessors are the only ones who are gonna be able to generate, be, be able to create a structure which will be taxed.
Right, so they may need some legal direction in terms of how to think about things.
That's true. And also, they're limited by what the state, the state says they can do in terms of how they structure their assessment.
Thought on that, turn it along that line, these different states that it is legal in, okay, wouldn't they have a setup already for evaluation of, let's say, like Colorado or California where it's already legal? Don't they have some guidelines for accessing?
Yeah, that, I'm sure they do, and it may be...
I mean, I just, I'm trying to take along your lines with what you were saying.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, uh, creative tax attorneys who deal with land use and taxes like this, you know, and I'm not saying I have a solution, but I was married to a tax attorney who dealt with land use and development for forty-two years. And if he couldn't find a solution, well, he always found a solution. He and his law firm and his partners and whatever, there was always a solution. Because there's always a loophole or a chink in the armor or something like that. And the assessors, maybe it's just Beth, and maybe it's one of our legal, maybe it's Tom, but, or someone... But there's, but there's, you know, I, I just don't think, no, I think there's a solution out there, we just don't know whether it's... And, and if we can find, if we can find a way, everybody will follow us too. So, I don't know what they do in California.
No, no, yeah, I was just thinking, I mean, uh...
I mean, every, every area in California is able to assess its own sales tax. So, like the, you know, the city of Los Angeles, the county of Los Angeles, and the, you know, city of West Hollywood, the city of North Hollywood, they all get, you know, benefit of the sales taxes.
They do, but they, but they all have the same property tax or excise tax calculations for equipment and the way, and the way in which it would be structured.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I, I would imagine that they do.
But every county and every municipality has a different tax base. So you file with the state board of equalization, they have these huge charts that you know where if things are sold in different areas of California, what you have to calculate and add on to the state's sales tax.
I've got a couple of those charts the, uh, California tax commission sent me.
When I had a corporation in California, you know, you had to have somebody dealing with it all the time.
Can we treat them and say, the state treats cars? We depreciate them at four percent a year for five years and then we just stop and say, that's it, that's your excise tax, you know?
Don't know.
We don't care what you paid for it, we're gonna tell you what the cost was, you can go from there.
Rich, another question to ask along this idea of this marijuana, like, how you were saying about how odor or effective of neighbors or anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, does this come under any new thought of like apartments and odor? Does this come under any new thought of like apartments and odor?
But a lot of apartments don't let you smoke in the building.
Well, I...
So most of the new ones don't.
Okay. That would be up to the landlord.
Just...
Well, no. Like for instance, in California, you can't smoke in the buildings.
Yeah? Well, out here, a lot of it is up to the landlord. You can't smoke in my house. You can't smoke on my property.
You can't even smoke on the sidewalks in Los Angeles.
That's why they pay... That's why they're paying so much.
I was just telling you. They...
Then that's because it's my trick.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
They're not out there smoking. They're out there with Cheech and Chong.
For sure.
Yeah, that's why the...
We're gonna have to work on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's... I've made my... I've already made my pitch to... I have one more question. I'm gonna answer that one. What can we do? Of course, the medical marijuana people, those are the ones that we need to look at. Because we already... We did not opt in. What we did was expressly prohibit retail marijuana sales. It's not allowed. We would have to change the ordinance. No, well, we still... We still are not... Retail marijuana is still not permitted in the town. It's not such time as the citizens want.
So we have to look at the medical aspect.
But the medical, it's an opt-in. So we don't have to change anything because we're not required to have medical marijuana dispensaries or testing facilities or manufacturing facilities, manufacturing facilities. We don't have to have those unless we opted in. The only thing that is affected, which was the question that was posed, was what do we do about the marijuana, the medical marijuana caregiver? Before, we did regularly, you know, not to permit or to... They don't exist anymore. They kind of left. And big rules have changed. So we have to adapt to what we have right now, which I guess the citizens were in favor of, of having medical marijuana caregivers with the issues. We just always wanted to be, but it did not. I think there was no interest in having these warehouse facilities.
Could that be put back before the public?
Yeah. It could. The issue, the way I see it, is yes, we could put it back there, but registered caregivers, possession, cultivation, limited manufacturing, transfer, sale to qualifying patients, 500 square feet of plant canopy, 60 immature plants and unlimited seedings. And under the question of local regulation, yes, but you can't prohibit or limit the number.
May not.
Well, but if we have... If we opted in to allow it in the first place...
It's not an opt-in situation.
Oh, that's what I just understood Ted said.
We're not allowed to not allow it.
What we're not... What we can... What we opt in to, medical marijuana caregivers have been given, because it was such a squawking, I think, and it's maybe politics. I don't know. But they're giving the same facilities that retail marijuana producers have, which is the ability to have retail, to retail it out. I'm not sure how that works. Well, you have an unlimited number of caregivers. So you can retail it out. You can have a shop. You can have a manufacturing facility where you process it into other items. Tinctures, for instance. You can make edibles out of it, making the brownies or whatever. And then also you could, what was the other one? It's all the same things that retail guys can do.
But my question really is...
Dispensers.
Can a town refuse to allow medical marijuana dispensaries or whatever?
Yes.
Dispensers you can't. Caregiving you can.
Okay. That's what I'm looking at. We can't disallow caregivers.
Before we could. We can't now.
Okay. All right.
And they have registered patients that are registered with the state. Perhaps what that registration is like. But I think you're basically, you're registered because you get a prescription. Or it's not even a prescription. It's a suggestion for your primary care physician that this will help with whatever condition you have.
Or a psychologist or a psychiatrist.
That type of registration is not actually publicly accessible.
That's right. It's not. It's uncovered. They don't wanna tell the DEA who's getting the drugs.
Right. But you could go to any psychologist or psychiatrist and say that you have anxiety. And they could write you a prescription.
They have to have a special place to do so.
Well, I'm sure that...
No, not all the truth to do it.
Right.
That actually hard to find one. I don't know.
And they...
Well, if you were...
Yes, and they may. Well, I don't... It's not my...
If you were on the inside, it wouldn't be hard to find it. Because they all belong in the same order.
No, but I'm just saying, you find the couple of people that do it. But it's not like every primary care physician or N P or psychiatrist often do it.
So that's another thing. In California, anybody who has a like medical license can write the prescription.
Yeah. It's an extra step.
Sure. It almost negates the need for retail outlets because you can always get prescriptions.
And it's a annual renewal as well.
What's interesting is, and this is what they found, that you used to be able to have six plants per patient. You had five plants and five patients, including the caregiver. Then they had six. It originally was six. Then it went down to five. And now caregivers can cultivate up to 30 mature plants, which is very similar to the six plants for five patients.
Kind of about the same, yeah.
Yeah, it's about the same. Or 500 square feet of canopy, okay? And then you can have 60 immature plants and unlimited seedings. We have a constant supply. Well, what they came to realize is no five people are gonna consume that much of this product.
And they can sell it to other people.
So you could... I won't say what would happen, but I think that fed a good black market situation. And so now caregivers were allowed to dispense into as many patients as they could. So they have the same restrictions of what they produce. Each caregiver produces. But now they're not limited to giving just to those five patients they can sell to.
But if I read this correctly and I understood it, they're also allowed to sell 75% of their crop to other caregivers. So they grow too much and they sell it to somebody who doesn't grow anything.
Or has a problem, has a crop failure or whatever else.
So why don't we think globally about this, okay? Without finding a tax solution, how we can benefit? I mean, what do you think is the best plan that puts a lid a little bit on what's gonna happen, but then doesn't, you know, stays in concert with what the state wants us to do, but also sort of, you know, goes along with what the town voted to? Is there a more global solution, do you think, Ted?
I don't know. I don't know if there's a more global solution. I think there's gonna be a glut of product in market, quite frankly. Because you have huge quantities and you have a lot of players in this game and a limited population.
And less allure now.
It's not a lot.
And it collapses under its own weight in a lot of ways. And you could really drive to Bitterford if you wanted to buy some.
Well, you can always do that.
Right. So the thing is, what happens when that... What happens when that traffic goes to Bitterford? Do they spend money in Bitterford? There isn't many places to spend money in a Rundle right now.
There's gonna be a lot of accidents when they all get through.
Lots of accidents. So...
That'll be parking lots.
My thoughts on this whole thing are that we look at it and find out what kind of guidelines we can put on caregivers in terms of... The attorney's not sure we can put any kinds of restrictions on them.
I think we can put restrictions in terms of operation and production and the potential impacts to the community. And I don't mean socially. Basically impacts to the location, proximity to residential neighborhoods and so forth. Because that is part of the whole... That's part of the police power we have as a municipality in terms of how land use is done. Big issue is, you know, if we allow this in the DB2 without certain standards of this, we have people who do warehouse production. Will that be successful? I don't know.
So what... Do you know what they're doing in Bitterford and Saco, Ted? Should we find out?
I can't. It's all... It all depends with the town, what direction this board wants to go. Do we want to continue pursuing what we can limit? Or do we want to see what they're doing in terms of their caregiver experience? I can talk to both of the Saco and the... Well, I can talk to all the players who are in here. I don't think ours got anything special.
Ted, where does this fit in the hierarchy of things that we need to do?
I think it's... The only reason this is floated to the top is because we got challenged. That's the only reason. Yeah, I got challenged by an attorney. Who helped us write this. So those are weaknesses.
Okay.
He used to be an attorney under Leah in...
Ben?
Yeah. Ben's become a state expert.
He was in the...
Yeah, he's actually doing a lot of these seminars. I sat next to him in one of his seminars. He's doing it. So he's... Yeah, Jensen Barrett is one of the leaders in this department. So that's why it's floated up the top. Because I'm just not sure it's gonna stay there. It will come back. Because right now our ordinance references a now superseded statute. And when we were first challenged, I said, "It doesn't matter. That's the intent." The intent was this. Even though that statute's been superseded, the intent of the municipality was that we didn't do this limitation. And Leah confirmed that. And that's it. We're gonna do some of that because we're not gonna sit back. You'll be able to get away with that for a while. But right now, if this were really to go to a challenge, which Ben didn't want to do.
Was he looking at medical or retail?
No, he was looking at medical.
He was looking at medical?
He was looking at medical. He knew that we basically opted out three minutes. He helped us write the limited uses thing, recall. So he knew where we stood on it. But he reviewed it as a medical.
At this point, is it only allowed in DB2?
Right now, medical marijuana is only allowed in DB2.
Which is very large area. It's not like we're limiting it.
I was just gonna say, why don't we move to the gateway area?
It's wet.
They just bake all sorts of responsibilities.
Gateway, the gateway district is like 12 square feet. How much could you do there?
And why do you say it's wet as one?
Plus, I think gateway is an excellent name for a place.
It's a perfect term. We thought about that. We really did.
No, my initial idea, apart from the pun involved, you know, maybe just reducing the area in which it will be allowed is the answer.
See, I don't know if we can... I don't know if we... Under the current rule that they passed, I don't know if we can restrict them from being where they wanna be.
I think we can, no. I think we can restrict where they are. I think that's still...
Does that come under conditional use permits?
Municipalities probably, per product, to restrict what areas it goes into. Obviously, a large manufacturing facility in the middle of a residential district is a very... It's Euclid all over again. It's the thing you don't do. Because that impacts property values. And that's what someone's all about, stabilization of property values. So that I don't think... I don't think the state can mandate that. But if we were to say you can only have X number of licenses, we're willing to allow X number of facilities, I think that's where you run into a challenge. Whether or not they... And they could easily say that what we have now is a thousand-foot setback to a provider. Within that constants, I think they would argue that that constants restriction would be...
Right.
No, it can't.
And that's... To me, that's what I'm reading when I think about the fact that we say, "Well, you could be in the DB2, but you can't be in the R1." That's a restriction on the number of providers that you can have. And I'm not sure that it would stand up to a legal challenge.
I think it would. Because you make the nuisance. You can bring up the property value issue.
But you can...
It's not suitable. If manufacturing's not suitable in a residential district, why would production of marijuana be a suitable thing in a residential district, commercial production?
It would be suitable anywhere within an agricultural...
Because it's very intense.
It is agricultural.
It's really agricultural. It's not like we have fields of marijuana just grown.
You just can't grow them up here.
That's right. That's why it's all very intensive operation.
Well, maybe we should become the agricultural, the indoor agricultural area of growhouses and let other retail, you know, places, cities and towns that have retail centers. You know, if you walk around in Portland, there's all these head shops and things like that, places where you can buy...
You could buy all that stuff before they pass the law.
Well, what I'm saying is, a Rundle doesn't really have a highly developed retail space. And so it's highly unlikely that you're gonna get 15, you know, dispensaries all in a row on Portland Avenue. But we have a lot of space. And maybe like the solar... Who was the young...
Oh, yeah.
Young man who was doing the solar farm? You know, maybe we should encourage people to build their growhouses here and sell it elsewhere to market ourselves as the place to grow your dope, but not to sell it, so to speak. And perfect because we don't have a big retail...
Would the Rundle come grow with us?
Yes, come grow with us. Your dope? Your dope? Why aren't you coming with us now?
Ted, didn't we get had at one time before we went through all this? We had different people who wanted to set up?
I've been... We have given permits to two people.
No, no. I'm saying, when this all started, there were people, I thought, who wanted to put up a warehouse or something other way up...
Yes.
Off like now, which would be the DB2 section. But this was even before DB2 even came about.
It was after we had DB2 that there had been rumors about it. And this board took it to the town meeting to restrict the number of users that could be in there. Because that was a warehouse situation as well. That's how we became aware that this paradigm of growers was not a cottage industry where it's shifted to industrial, in which it's certainly orchestrated by large investors. So that's when we came up with this new definition of what the restrictions were and how many, of distance between growers. So we made the cottage industry as a vision at first.
Well, I think we should look at it and, again, from that perspective. If we could say that you can't have one within 1,000 feet of a school or a daycare or a church or a hospital or something, then let's work along those lines and say, okay, if the state is saying that we have to allow them to come in and we cannot restrict the density, but we can put logical standards to say you can't be side by each other against one another and pretend that you're a bit of...
That's, I think, what we're gonna have to do. But I want to find out from the tax attorneys. I haven't talked to her directly. I believe I did. Yeah, that was a possibility. I'm gonna talk to her directly and say, "Look, this is what we have right now. Is that defensible? And if it isn't, why not? And what would be?" Because this is what the will of the people has been in this town. And they want to continue it because they wanna limit this at this particular time. I don't think... Since we have had no interest in retail stores and dispensaries and testing facilities and manufacturers at retail level, I can't imagine townspeople wanting to care people.
Well, you're gonna put it in a contract zone?
This is a good reason not to have a contract zone, isn't it? But a contract zone is a contract. And a selectman, and ultimately, I think the selectman usually approves that contract. That's...
And all the terms and conditions.
Terms, yeah. Whether it's appropriate or not. I'm not sure. But I will... I've already told Leah that I can answer to that question of, because it was gonna be hilarious. Or we missed it. Maybe what Leah was trying to say was I'm not gonna even address it because you can't. So I'm gonna say, you're challenged. It has to be like, how can we do it? How can we do this? Because I know this is what the board wants to find out. And if not, then we have to make some other decisions, whether DB1 is the appropriate one. I don't think we can do it. Kennebunk had with mobile home parks when the town was first required.
Can't hear you.
Kennebunk, when, when mobile homes, when the state handed it, no municipality could refuse a mobile home park. They all had to, had to zone certain areas for mobile home parks. I know the Kennebunk, but there's a monkey swamp. And the state, they came down hard on that one. Because it wasn't feasible, couldn't do it.
Can we stick them out? I don't really name of the guy. The, the property between the museum on Route one and the railroad tracks? All that wetland that's out back there, can we just say?
The, the.
Considering they need to have water to grow, maybe we could just move them all up to there.
That's where the timber frame place wanted to go.
No, no, if you start up on the R four district, actually, where the railroad track goes, the railroad track makes all those lots out there inaccessible. That's the area you're talking about, wasn't it? Are you talking about down, down the gateway?
It's down on Gateway.
On the east side of the railroad.
Right, the gondola, I guess, on the south side of the railroad track.
Where the swamp is.
Down at the end of the road. And with the benefit of.
Yeah.
It's Richardson Brook, right?
Yeah, it's Richardson Brook, which is now an impaired, federal impaired watershed.
Yeah, but they open up and drain it out?
Not a federal impaired watershed.
So what's the plan, Ted?
My plan is, I'm going to, I'm going to get back to, to you on this. In the meantime, I think we need to, A, schedule public hearing for those things you've already had decisions to make. Those were change, we've gone through a lot of those changes. The next set of important ones, we're coming up with some subdivision road standards that might be a lot less stringent in order to allow more flexibility in design or rural design.
What do we have, that we have to do some, any public hearings on?
We have all those showing zone changes. We've got, geez, you have a list. Stuff you've already, already got. Looks slow.
Do you not remember?
No.
Yeah.
Thank you. You've got that, you've got that. Oh, yeah, this. This, this, yeah, we need to work on getting some of this stuff. But we don't have anything that's, that's even close to a public hearing.
Well, we already have the fees, we've already written the fees. Fees come out because of selectmen. Showing zoning references, that's done.
See you, Tom.
Thank you, folks, for coming. Appreciate it.
Night, guys. Good night.
We have the, um.
Townhouse water.
No, we, I've got a whole bunch of it's on this list because we've already done it.
We do, but we don't.
If, if we're, if we're going to do that, let's have those public hearings right away. And so that we're in compliance with the selectman and the town manager. Let's just happily get them done.
That little, remember going over that little requirement that if you have a, you have a state law, you actually have to use the access, access strip as for access and not just for a way of dodging the regulations. We also have one where you said you would allow. Because currently, it's a little, currently flylots are not permitted in subdivisions in our town. And we don't call them flylots, we call them state lots. But you said now that that has a use in subdivisions and we shouldn't exclude it. So, you know, we have to, I've already made those small little things. We should get, that, we don't even have to take, none of the subdivision stuff. We have to just have a public hearing and then it's vote on it. We should focus on having the public hearings on all the small stuff right now. Including, we can put off some of the subdivision.
Clear the decks.
Clear the decks, let's get it done. So, because we have, the priorities you guys labeled were.
If we've done anything that needs to go to town meeting, let's have the public hearing. If it's ready, let's have the public hearing.
That's what I wanted to do, is get that, that public hearing out of our way because we still have to focus on R four, the RC district, excuse me. We have the residential districts, we have to do something with those things. Really do. Because it's been four years now since the conflict came out. It's like, it's what we should do and we haven't done.
And the, the only way we're going to be able to get a lot of that done is for us to meet every week. And nobody wants to be that kind of way.
Well, at least let's make some.
Last time we did that, nothing got done. We got shot down.
Well, we also tackled one of the toughest issues around, and that was animal husbandry.
And guess what? We still got shot down.
Yes, I know. Two, two years in a row. And we spent a whole, what, four months, five months?
Yeah.
A lot of time on that. That was a huge investment by these folks. Alan Shepard, I had a meeting with him and Warren Panett, and they're going to try. I said, you've got to be a gentleman's spirit.
They're, they're going to write the ordinance.
They're going to, they're going to, they're going to take a shot at it and bring it to the wing. They're not going to do it by petition. They're going to, when they do it, when they get it done.
In other words, it's not going to be at this town meeting.
I don't.
That's what I'm going at because time-wise, our public hearings and everything else.
Look, if we don't get our public hearings done within the next five weeks, we're not going to get them, right?
We should get them. Because we've got a loaded agenda. We have, we have, what, six, seven?
Is this upcoming?
This is, we've got two. Four new ones, four new ones and two.
We've got four new ones, but out of, out of the four new ones, three of them are nothing more than scheduled weak sidewalks.
Right, but there's still major projects. We've got two subdivisions we'll, that'll be coming back to us. We still have DMR, which will be coming back to us.
Gary Martin, and then the one across the street for the service, which is at the, uh, service?
Yeah, they're, they're.
Yeah, they're on, they're on the list. We're going to have that this time. We have to go to our side.
Well, that road, with Gary Martin Road, which is DM and R Road.
Right.
Doesn't that affect him also? Because it comes, they come into the Arundel storage unit there off DM and R Road.
Now, they're coming off of Route one.
Yeah, they come right in off Route one, yeah.
Okay, I thought it was.
Their property line is the other, is the other side of that, that fifty-foot right away. But they don't have an encroachment, so they don't have a problem. They don't have an issue. And I asked them, you want to come on DMR? And they said, not a chance.
So who can we schedule? We're going to wait to schedule the public hearings?
We want to schedule. Oh, which public hearings?
Which ones do you, which, what can we schedule?
I will give you a list by next week of all ones that we should schedule. Well, you guys have already asked.
I think, I think we need to, I think we just need to put them up for the twenty-sixth.
Okay, let's do it.
And whatever, whatever we have, we'll put them up for the twenty-sixth.
No, we don't have enough time to advertise for the twenty-sixth. I have to do it in fourteen days.
Yeah.
And what's today, five?
Today's the fifth. We've got enough time. We've got three weeks till the twenty-sixth.
If I have time, I'll do it. We're just, we're just. How's that? Do you want your packets or not for next week?
Not really.
Oh, thank you. But, all right, I will, I will, I will put together the package together for you and send it out, get the packets.
Yeah.
Next week. I won't get the packets out tomorrow, but I can't stop probably Monday.
They will go in the hole.
And then we can, we can do them and get them done. This, this stuff that we can do in the subdivision? Again, we can, we can post a, a public hearing about the changes and then we could vote on, is it taken care of? We can do that after we get the stuff that's going to the town meeting.
Okay. One other thing, Rich, you should invite anybody who would like to attend the select meeting. What's your point?
The select, the budget. Next Tuesday night here in the school, the budget committee is reviewing the planning board's budget. I put in money, because the selectmen are asking us or telling us that they want us to have everything in electronic format. So I put in money to see if they'll give up, if they'll buy us tablets and/or laptops so that we could do what they're asking us to do.
Which would be.
That's, that's, that's going to be significant in the front, I'll play.
It will be.
It'll pay for itself in no time, just in time.
Just in the time. Time and, and behavior.
Right, material. It's just crazy. It's such a waste.
It's nuts. And, you know, Jamie has mentioned before that, that he was concerned about not having the big plan in front to, to review. And those who really want a big plan, you know, make a big plan available to you. All, you know.
Well, we can, we can tell the applicant to give us the, the large plan, everything else.
Yeah, you know, prior.
Yeah, for that. And it'll save Ted having to distribute all of that stuff out and around and make all of the copies and spend all, half, half of his work week getting us ready for the next week.
I totally agree with that.
So we're, Tuesday night is. Pull it up anytime. You, 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 you come from work and you said, I thought I threw the packet in the back of the car and it's not there, you know, it's.
Right, bass.
Well, you're, yeah, everything's in the back of your car. I've seen it. I think Jimmy Hoffa's back there, isn't he somewhere?
I didn't say how many forty-fives or what.
Oh, that's good. You're talking cold forty-fives or, you know?
We're on camera still, folks.
All right, so we don't.
But anyways, that's, so Rich could probably use some support because it's not actually resonating very well so far.
Tuesday night?
Tuesday night at seven o'clock, you know, my.
We'll try to be there.
Okay, great.
Who's the chair and the co-chair?
I have no idea.
No, she said the chair and the co-chair.
Oh, the chair and the co-chair. I thought she was asking who the chair is.
No, no, I know who the chair is.
That's you, by the way.
The chair and the coaches.
The coaches.
Well, that, would the town give each tablet, or would it say each of us an email so it would be emailed through the town, through the tablets? Because the town.
Technically, that's really what they should do.
That way.
Because when you leave the board, everything that has been communicated should be on that laptop and belongs to the town.
That's right.
Right, not to you.
And to save, to save that, in some cases, it probably should be linked to, to the server.
Yes, there's no question.
There should be a special server for the planning board, which all this data is available for retrieval at your need, on demand.
I get too much drug bill.
Yeah, everything's got.
Yeah, but just for, for legal reasons. So you eliminate exposure. It all, it's on, it's on the town's.
I don't play.
Their documents, it's their, their documents on their tablet. And when you go, you know, and they walk you out of the building, Marty, they take your laptop. You don't get to take a whip. And your cell phone, by the way.
Online. So if I use the lap, if I lose the tablet, whatever.
They lock you out.
Have them all stay there.
Right.
If you have a company's cell phone.
Our company.
Yeah, but a lot of companies don't want you to use your cell phone. They don't want you to use your own laptop. They want to be able to, that's their property. They keep it. They control it.
Yeah, and all the information on it is their property.
That's right. Because you just never know when it's going to come back and bite you. So they want to keep it all themselves. There's methods, no methods.
It's US government who follow their policy and they're all set for you.
True.
Okay, in the, in the motion.
I hope that we adjourn.
We're done.
Yeah.
I just had a feeling that was going to go south.
Yeah.
I know you may think it's silly, but.